...today during their literacy time and I really appreciate, uh, appreciate that time and what I learned today.
Okay, thank you so much Commissioner Lomenack. Any other reports Commissioner King?
Yes ma'am and chair, I'll, I'll be really brief, um. It's time to open the, the board, the board meetings to the public. Um, we are completely out of compliance with the law. Live feed is not a replacement for open, um, so I move at this point that we put on the agenda for the next board meeting, that our board meetings will be open to the public.
I'd second that motion.
There's a motion on the floor to, uh, put on the agenda, meetings being opened back up to the public. It's been seconded by Commissioner Lomenack. We'll now open the floor for any questions or comments from any board member. Commissioner King?
Ma'am Chair, may, ma- maybe we need to clarify this, um, did the board vote at any point to close the meetings?
No, we were under very support at that time, uh, when this initially happened, so we've been under working under those, um, uh, pretenses at this time.
Right, and, and, and so as soon as those, the, 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 a state of emergency was lifted, was the time that we needed to open back up, right? So, does this even require a vote?
Wait to hear from me in council.
While the meetings were voted to be closed, um, the board, I would need to go back and look at what happened at that time, but there was discussion and a vote in terms of how the meetings would be held and I'll be glad to bring that back at the next meeting.
She, she is, she is correct. I do remember that because we had to change some policies, uh, based off what we got from S C S B A at the time.
Right.
That was in March, and then the very next meeting, um, we did change some policies, and so I don't have those in front of me, but, um, but we, yeah, we can, we can take a look at that, but yeah, we did vote to change the policy which in turn changed the meeting setting.
Well, but, but that did, okay, but the, changing the policies was in reaction to the state of emergency under which we are not anymore. So, I, I really question the, e- even the need to, to vote to reopen the the meetings, um, but, but at this point, i- it's way past time that, uh, maybe things be open.
Let, let us allow, uh, Attorney Williams to come back to us, but I do have a question. I guess Ms. King, you can help me with this one, when you say that we are violating the law. What law are we violating? Because the law says the school district is to provide access to the meeting, which we are doing virtual and their ability to communicate to us. The board meeting, the board meeting, board meeting of commissioners, is a meeting of seven duly elected folk where we discuss the business of the district. And our responsibility to the public, and this is not to shy away to our responsibilities, truth be told, yes, I would love to be, have everyone present, but there are a lot of things that I think we have to consider, the safety, health, well-being, I think the general assembly right now is not open to the public, the gallery is not. So, I, I need to understand when, because sometimes when we say violating the law, that's kind of harsh, so I need to understand what law we are violating because the law says, the law says that the board, the board meeting is the meeting of the board conducting the business of the school district on behalf of the constituents, the community. And we're responsible for providing them access. We are virtual, we are live-streamed, which was something we never did. But we went live-streamed so our communities could see these meetings in real time versus going back to pulling them up and retrieving them off the website. We also have in place a way for them to communicate with us. Ms. York tonight read any comments that were provided from the community, so I, I want to understand what law we are breaking. And, and take me to where it's in law so we all know, because if we're breaking the law, no, we don't want to break the law. But I think before we say we're breaking the law, let's look at the law and, and let's clarify whether or not we're breaking the law, but law tells us to provide access. That's almost like educating a child. You know, the law doesn't say it has to be face-to-face. It says we have to educate the child. That's the law. So if a child is in a discipline matter, and I know this is something totally different, but again, it's law. It says that the district is responsible for educating the child. Just as the Board of Commissioners, as a duly elected body, is responsible for, uh, conducting the business of the school district, um, and providing access. So, the key word is access, so, you know, what law are we violating so we all know, what, so we can get this on track if we're breaking the law?
And I'd be glad to answer that question. It is, it's, it's the law of open me- meetings and providing electronic, electronic is not a substitute for opening the public, the meetings to the public in person. That's, that's what the law is.
Can you email that to us so we all have it? It's called the law of open meetings?
Call it open, open meetings, the, what, what governs governmental agencies are open meetings and open meetings doesn't mean, doesn't mean live feed. It means, it means physical presence.
Okay, I think, I think open meetings, um, is probably limited to interpretation when it comes to open meetings. We're not, that's one of the reasons why, for you, you know, the thing that we all love to talk about, that's why we don't conduct votes in secret. We have to conduct the votes in public where the public can see openly. Right now, this is an open meeting, even though the only individuals in the audience are staff, Dr. Witherspoon's staff and I T folk that are streaming this for us tonight, so the meeting tonight, I mean, Attorney Williams, you correct me if I'm wrong, is this not an open meeting? Is this, you, you, you're the lawyer on staff, so is this not an open meeting? It's an open meeting, it's open because what we're doing is in real time and the public has access to it. We're not having a secret meeting back in the closet. It's an open meeting. But, but the law, what the law requires of us is to provide access and, and, you know, I, I'm not going to be on the soapbox about this because at the end of the day, yes, we want to open back up, but we got a variant out here right now that has impacted everybody in this room and beyond, a lot of people sick. We have to take into consideration that those individuals sitting out there in that audience along with superintendent and his staff are in school buildings, start tomorrow. So, one of us can be positive in here, so sometimes the smaller the number, kind of helps lower the spread, Aaron. You know, so I just, I want to put that out there for what it's worth. I don't think that the board is trying to do anything wrong in keeping us like this, because in, in that case, then we need to open up everything. We need to go back to face-to-face, um, chat with the chairs. We need to go back face-to-face committee meetings. You all are sitting and taking committee meetings virtually. And I don't hear anybody squawking about, well, we need to come back to the building and have committees, so if we're going to open, we need to open everything. But, is that a wise decision right now? Do we still need to be cautious and careful, as they're saying, we'll come off this peak in February? So is, is it safe for us to play it smart? Richardson One, and I, I don't knock any district, but one thing we've done well is kept our numbers down. There are districts that have had to go virtual. I've talked to folk, where major outbreaks in schools. And I really believe our mandate masks really had a lot to do with why our numbers are as low as they are. And we still want to be careful. We still want to be cautious, but we still want to make sure that the public has access to the meetings. And I, I believe we've done a good job of that, um, I, I think, but, I, I think we still need to be careful and conscious because there are districts out there that are saying they should have done what we did. Because they're spreading. They've lost faculty that left meetings and got sick. We buried two board members in the state of South Carolina, two, in the same district, and I don't want to tell you the story behind it. Commissioner Devine knows it. That's why we still have to be a little cautious right now. And, and, and hopefully Omicron is, is the last of, of this preferably. But i- it's a risk right now, guys, that we are all taking our children, the faculty, staff. I don't want any parent to come to a board meeting and get sick. You know, so, you know, we can continue to, to discuss it and, and, and deliberate, and I'll yield at this time for any other comments. I think Commissioner Bishop, you had your hand up.
No, you, you stated, um, um, some of the same thoughts, so I won't repeat them. But if I recall, uh, it was a suspension, uh, that we voted on.
Mm-hmm.
Right, um, when Chairman Devine was chairing, that's what we voted on. It was a suspension
Mm-hmm.
of our own policy.
Right.
So when colleagues said the law, I'm interested, you know, which one did we really abide by from the beginning? Because we went according to our own policy to suspend. Uh, so, uh, I'm interested to hear what comes from this discussion.
Mm-hmm.
So that, um, as you stated, we don't want to do anything illegally. And if it was, have we been doing it since we suspended our own policy? Uh, you know, to come up and bring it now, is also making me understand that if we're going to open it up, do we tear down these barriers as well? Uh, do we go back to S A B? Um, where all of this staff has to be in that same room? Uh, do we do, uh, also conversations about our bus drivers? Uh, and their protection, so it's going to need to be a full conversation than just opening a meeting. And that takes something, uh, from this administration to bring to us as well. So that's just what I'm trying to see about this whole, um, vote and the second, uh, that's on the table. And maybe that's just the discussion I want to have.
Thank you Commissioner Bishop. In addition, Mr. Lomenack?
Yeah, I, I, I do think that we need to spend more time looking at the legality of it. Uh, um, I mean, just a quick search online, there are South Carolina attorneys that do believe that not having a public meeting when you're not in a state of emergency does actually violate the law. Uh, attorneys differ all the time, but I think we need to have more thought given to that in this discussion, but I personally, I mean, if the, if the prior vote was based on the state of emergency, once the state of emergency dissolves, I don't think that that prior vote gets to continue, uh, in perpetuity. But more importantly, I think what we're doing unnecessarily breeds distrust. Uh, we can absolutely have people in here and still use precautions, still use these dividers, still use masks, just like we're asking our teachers and students. I was in this auditorium last week. I was in the Drea Gym, uh, last week. Um, I, you know, I see teachers and students going on field trips. Um, and they're still using precautions, and I'm glad they are. We can use those same precautions. Just having the public come in doesn't mean we ignore uh, masking or that we ignore dividers. We can still have people in, come in. We can limit the numbers based on physical distancing. Uh, frankly, these auditoriums are pretty large. I am troubled, as some teachers have pointed out to me, that we aren't willing to do what we've been asking of them in terms of having adults or kids in their classrooms and field trips and sporting events. I think we can do it safely and I think it just, it, it, this is an unnecessary self-conflicted wound when people want to come and we're not allowing them to do it. I think it's an easy thing. I think live streaming is awesome. I think it's worked for the good part since I've been a member. Um, but, so I am super impressed with that. I think that adds some people who can't get to the meetings. And I think opening it up to the public, make sure that some folks who do not have Wi-Fi access but do have a car can also get to the meetings. I think doing both, make sure that everybody who wants to participate can do it, and I'm all for the more, the, the more the merrier. Um, and I'm sure there's going to be somebody that shows up at a meeting at some point, yells at me, and that's okay. But I think that we need to allow folks to come. Thank you.
And, and I appreciate that comment. Are there any other comments? Before I go to Tanika Myers, Commissioner Myers, let, let me say this. When we say open up a meeting to the public, let me clarify. The meeting is open to the public. Let me be clear. Every vote has been taken on a stage at either Lower Bridgeland, C A Johnson, Eau Claire, or Drea High School. So every meeting has been open to the public. So what you're saying is you want in-person individuals allowed to come into the already open meeting. I'm fine with that. I, I honestly, I don't understand, this is just my personal take, and, and take it as what, what I say, Aaron. What is it that needs to be accomplished in person that we have not provided access to? It's a meeting that you cannot talk out of order. Because it's the meeting of the board. You're only allowed to speak as you sign up. We have access to that. So the question would be, well, what needs to happen in person at the meeting that we don't know about? We'll continue to discuss this. Please get the information back to us. Ms. King said that the law is called the law of open meetings. So we need to research that. I'm going to yield to Commissioner Myers at this time.
I just, excuse me, I just want to also add, if we don't have this meeting open to the public, guys, we got to look at the whole bigger pictures because we got a lot of parents that would like to come back in the classrooms, so we need to think the whole process through. So when you're opening doors halfway, you need to think the whole complete process through. Not just benefiting this meetings. We got to think about the full process of Richard One.
Thank you Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Clyburn, before Ms. Commissioner Clyburn, Dr. Witherspoon and I was on a Zoom. And I, I want to share this to those that are listening and to my colleagues. Commissioner Devine, there are policies that prohibit certain things in the school district. And there's science. And the school district is stuck in the middle. We have to adhere to what the science tells us. We have to adhere to what the policy tells us. For instance, I have parents saying, y'all need to go virtual. I said, hey, have you heard of H one dash one zero three? They said, no. But it's a proviso, Mr. Carlin, that will take forty-seven point twenty-two percent. See, I studied my stuff of our base student costs. That's almost fifty percent of our funding away. If we take more than five percent of this district, five percent of this district is A C Florida alone. Let's do the math. So, as I said to the superintendent, and on this call, we got fifty-two schools. Dr. Presar, what school do we save? And what's the other fifty-one that we have come back in person? There's a lot of things we have to consider when it comes to open back up. And Commissioner Myers, you said it frankly, perfectly. Then, then the, then the board needs to come to S A B for their committee meetings, that you've been taking warm and cozy drinking and sipping your coffee by the fireplace. And the board needs to no longer do chat via, uh, the Zoom and show it back to the school. If we're going to open face-to-face, not open up for public access, but open up for face-to-face. Okay, so the risk factors now are out there for everybody, okay? So, you know, consider all of those things. Commissioner Clyburn and then Commissioner Bishop.
Um, so there was a comment made by one of our colleagues a few minutes ago, um, about our meetings being virtual but open. There being an element of distrust. I'm baffled by that because I'm wondering, you know, we have, everything is exposed here. We have clear partitions. You know, what exactly would be something that we're hiding? Are we passing notes and, um, you know, do we have some invisible, you know, shields or something going on? I, I just don't understand what we, what's to distrust about, be distrustful about what we're doing. We're on open mics, you know, everything can be heard the same. So I'm just, I'm a little baffled by that and concerned about, you know, what the true intentions of, you know, this attempt is. You know, I think we'll be making the right decision, the safe decision, um, at the right time. And I'm not saying either way, you know, what's going to happen in the future, in the near future possibly, but, um, I just think we just need to be a little careful and, um, a little more, um, you know, cogni- cognizant of the words that we choose. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Clyburn. Commissioner Bishop?
Very, very brief. Uh, you know, um, Commissioner Lomenack said something about, uh, the position to the extreme that, you know, we should be to do everything that our teachers are doing. The other side of that extreme is, our teachers should be doing what we're doing, our coaches. So, um, just, just a thought, if we are virtual and not in person, that's, that's what it's really not in person means, right? Then, the consideration and conversation also has to go towards should games and attendance be in person as well. So just to add from one extreme to another, as this conversation goes forward, that if, um, the leadership of the board is operating like this, then is there a conversation about how attendance is at games, which are in-person attendance? I remember one time we had a middle school basketball championship and it was totally virtual. Uh, it wasn't in person, so when we had this discussion, as many have already said, in the totality of the district, not just a board meeting.
Thank you, um, Commissioner Bishop, and we appreciate that information. Appreciate the conversation from everyone because everybody's comments are important to know where everyone stands and how they feel about the matter. Um, what we're going to ask of Attorney Williams is to come back, um, to the board to statement of law as it relates to, um, law of open meetings. Um, and where we stand if we're violating that, and we need to have some discussion, because I noticed no one said anything about, yes, let's do committees face-to-face. Okay, again, if we come to committee face-to-face, you now have to bring in Dr. Witherspoon's entire staff in a location for it to be viewed. But if we're going to open, open it up. We're not going to pick and choose, because like I said, you know, as I sit in this meeting, it's an orderly conducted meeting. I, 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 I'm glad to know that, you know, our constituents want to come and see our face. We want to see their face too. But again, it's orderly. It's not with the, the outrage and, and et cetera, as Commissioner Lomenack alluded to, that, you know, they might want to come and yell at you, but they're not supposed to come and yell at you. Because that doesn't happen in board meetings, not in Richardson One's board meetings, that is. Um, we need to make sure that we are following the law, um, as Commissioner King has stated in her request. So we'll go back to the vote, um, if there's no further discussion. Um, we, okay, I've got two hands. All right, and by the way, all school districts in South Carolina are not, um, back in person. I'm terrified of that. Commissioner Lomenack and then Commissioner Devine.
Um, I, I, I just want to clarify, the, the person I was thinking of when I was talking is a, a older woman who does not have internet access and she has things she would like to say to us. Now, I could tell her to go figure out a cell phone and figure out how to email a statement or go use somebody else's Wi-Fi access. Um, but I didn't feel comfortable telling her that's what she needed to do. And so, from her perspective, she isn't able to, uh, to speak to us in the way that she wants. Now, we can tell her that her way is not the way we want to do it. But that's, and that's fine if that's what we want to tell her, but that's what I'm talking about when I say breeds distrust because from her perspective, we are shutting her out of her ability to come speak to us because that's the way she knows how to do it. So that's what I was talking about.
You really have me baffled now, Commissioner Lomenack, because we have cell phones, we have office numbers, we have email. And, and anyone that has wanted to get a hold of this board, trust me, has gotten a hold of this board. Um, so you're saying she needs to come to the school board meeting to talk to us, is what you're saying?
For public comment, the only way to submit it is if you've got internet access. We know plenty of people don't, not only, some people don't have internet access because they can't afford it. Some people don't have it because they don't have internet access.
Right.
She's also elderly.
Right.
She does not have a way, at least it's easy enough for her to use, to send us a public comment to be read. She wants to come say. I just think that she should be allowed to come say at this point. I wouldn't have said this, you know, when we were in the midst of-
But, but she has access now, because if she's reached out to you that much, find out from her what she needs. See, we, we, we serve a part here too, so if, if she's talked to you that much to say, I got something I need to say, you're a part of this board.
Well, yeah, and I met her in person at a, at a community meeting, but, um, so, you know, I don't have her, her contact information, but uh, this is what she told me and I don't have any reason to distrust her.
Right.
But again, that's what I'm talking about, though. Are we going to tell, I mean, do you really think, do we really think that there's somebody, there aren't people that don't want to come to these meetings because they want to stand up and talk to us in person rather than have somebody else read it? We realize we've talked all the time about all the families that don't have access to the internet. That was one of our complaints about E-Lear. And I agree. I did not think that we should be able to just switch to virtual learning in a week or a month because we've got thousands of families that literally do not have access to the internet, no matter how much money they have.
Right.
So I, so I do want to be careful about that, and I, I, there are people who want to speak. And we can judge them for wanting to speak versus emailing it in all we want, but they are constituents. And if they want to speak, if we can have them come here safely and do it, and I think we can, then I think we should do everything we can to, to, to make sure that happens.
And I hear you loud and clear, but remember too, we do have the phone. Dr. Witherspoon, do we need to set up a hotline for those individuals that don't have um, access to the computer that they can leave their comments? I know we have. Is that something we can look into if, if we're going to continue this, um?
Not at all.
Because I, I would, I would say, I got you Commissioner Bishop, I, I would say that, you know, we definitely, Mr. Lomenack, to your point, we don't want to shut out anyone with their comments. Um, let me be real clear, and you bring up a good point. Everyone does not have internet access. So should the hotline, if it's something we looked at from the beginning as well, to retrieve comments from, uh, our constituents? So thank you for sharing that. Commissioner Bishop?
Yeah, um, Commissioner, uh, Lomenack, I, I can, um, give some sensitivity to the story and I'm pretty sure case-by-case basis is many of them stories. Um, but to the other extreme, then give you one other story that is part of this whole conversation. Now, we, we're dealing with a mask mandate. Which we think that all students, all staff must wear masks. Forgive me for taking mine off, just to make my point clear. But there's one thing who's adamant about not wearing masks. And I think I see a defense attorney skill set coming out and I know you got a comment coming because you took your mask off. I jokingly say that, uh, across the table. But I don't want to get into a slippery slope of subjective content on this table. The objective is to allow us to let the vote and the discussion be what it is. And we follow the objective conversation from the administration. When they bring stuff, we exercise our thought and critical nature towards what's being presented. And I think that's where we are, because we're going down a slippery slope, but we're going to probably go case-by-case base
Right.
about the opinion of in-person mask, uh, you know, this, that, and other from one extreme to another. But I believe that we're going to have to allow the administration to do what they have always done. Bring us the science, bring us not the subjective comments, because we're going to bring opinions all from our different communities, all from our different constituents. Let this administration bring something to this board. Can we go to suspend? Then I think we're back at the table. To this board about what we should do and move forward. That's my opinion.
Sounds good, Commissioner Bishop. Any other comments before we go back to the original motion? Okay, Commissioner King and then Commissioner Clyburn.
Uh, it must have been several weeks ago, I did call our superintendent and expressed to him my concerns about this. And I was very pleasantly pre- pleased and I believe that Dr. Witherspoon, you, you told me on the phone that you were, was it agnostic, meaning that you were neutral, that you could put in place, of course, the, that you, you didn't have any objections. And of course, um, protocols would be in place just like they're in place in, in open meetings and in classroom, et cetera. But I really appreciated that, and so, um, i- it's just time, uh, i- with, of course, the, the protocols. No, no one is saying that the protocols don't have to be followed, of course, but, um, anyway, that's it.
All right, um, Commissioner Clyburn?
Um, so maybe this would be, um, I T, an I T question or, or communications. Oh, I missed yours. Sorry, communications question. Um, on Richardson One channel. Um, I understand that there is, we, we are, we currently have a way for it to be viewed at some point. Um, our meetings, our, um, board meetings, is that correct?
Commissioner Clyburn, did you say on the, on the spectrum cable channel?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, that's a lady. But yeah, on, um, Richardson One channel, so the, then our meetings can be viewed, um. Is there maybe some possibility in the future where our meetings can be aired? You know, at, at some point, live or? Is that in our capability or in the realm of possibility? No?
I don't know about the live on the cable channel. Uh, you know, obviously we have them lives, uh, live streamed on our website.
Right.
We would have to look at whether live on the spectrum cable channel is a possibility.
Okay. I was just, um, trying to-
I was just, um, trying to, you know, for someone that does not have the internet, um, if they could still view it at some point so that, that, if they have spectrum, they can view it at some point.
Yeah, they can, they can view the recorded version now.
The recorded version.
Yes.
Commissioner Bishop?
Before you, uh, ask for the vote or anyone calls for the vote, I just wanna make sure that the motion on the floor.
Right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually have, I'm gonna actually have Commissioner King restate the motion because the, of course, the, the debate and discussion has been pretty lengthy. So I will ask her to restate the, the request in, in, in just a second. Um, I wanna make sure that there are no other questions or comments from any board member.
I may have one more question after the, the, the motion's been stated.
Sir?
I may have one more question after the discussion and the motion is stated.
And let me just clarify this before Ms. King say, um, speaks. So one of my colleagues talked about self-inflicted wounds. A discussion about making, uh, safe decisions is never a self-inflicted wound. It is the responsibility of this board to sit and have debating discussions on a matter, um, such as we've done, to make sure we get the points and views from everybody, uh, at the table. So I just wanted to clarify that, that this is not self-inflicted wounds. This is healthy debate. Ms. King, if you'll restate the motion for everyone?
I move that we put on the agenda for the next board meeting to reopen our regular board meetings to the public.
Okay, and it's been seconded already by Commissioner, uh, Lomack. So Commissioner Bishop, do you have a question?
That's, that's what the confusion is for me. Uh, you're saying open to the public and-
We are, we are open. So you would wanna say in person, is what you're saying. So we need to restate.
I think that I'm just trying to get-
Or do we wanna go and take up the vote as she stated? It's been seconded as she stated.
Yes, right.
So we need to vote on that. And if there's a second motion or whatnot from someone, you can do that at that time. Or you can amend this motion. It's up to you. But we can go ahead and take up this matter if there's no further debate or discussion? The question, the request is to put on the next meeting's agenda to reopen to the public. And the question that Commissioner, uh, Bishop has raised is we are open to the public. Should not the request have been in person? So, um, that's where we are right now. Commissioner Myers and then Commissioner Lomack?
Quick question. We just wanna add it to the agenda so we can be able to talk about the topic? Or we add it into the agenda as if it's open to the public? I was, I think I'm, I'm, I think I have a misunderstanding about the motion.
Right. And, and I think that's why Commissioner Bishop asked her to restate the motion so that he knows how he needs to vote. Because the request is that on the next agenda, we vote to open to the public.
But we've added it to the agenda to-
No, we're not adding it. We're taking a vote. And if it's unanimous, then we will add it to the agenda to vote on reopening to the public. But the point that Commissioner Bishop is making is that we're already open to the public. So should she have said it differently? But because it's already a motion that's seconded as is, we will go forth as is. At the same time, we also ask for legal information from the attorney that we would need to get if we wanna make this vote based on law. Uh, so Commissioner Lomack?
I, I would ask Ms. Williams, I, I, the, the phrase open to the public is a legal phrase that I think means people are in here. Accessible to the public is what we are providing. And I'm not trying to split hairs, but we are being precise about that. So when you look at the laws and open, even ones that have livestreamed, they have used, they have said that that is not open to the public, but it was legal because of the state of emergency. They were accessible to the public. So I just wanna make sure that I think Commissioner King's initial motion is actually correct. But I would defer to Ms. Williams if, if, if she says that open to the public doesn't mean people can come in. I think that's what the law says. And accessible to the public is what we provided during the state of emergency.
But I, I don't, I don't think that's where we're at, Commissioner Lomack. I think, I, I think accessible, it goes back to what we've said originally. The public has access right now. So, so when you're saying what you're saying, it, it doesn't make sense along the lines of the public does have access. It, it goes back to the law that says we must educate a child. It doesn't tell us how. It just says we are required by law. So we're required by law to provide access to the meeting, which is what we've done. We, we, we did the livestream. It was a challenge, but we finally got it up and running that the public has access to view the meeting and to also they have access to give us comments. Now, to your point of not being able to send comments in for those individuals that don't have internet, you brought up a great, great point that we may need to look at even that. So the motion on the floor, i- i- it doesn't matter what might have been intended in the motion. The motion before us clearly says to put on the agenda at the next meeting to reopen to the public.
And, and what I mean when I seconded that, when I use the phrase open to the public or when I second a motion that uses the phrase open to the public, I think that that's a legal phrase that means the public is allowed to come in. Because I, I'm not arguing with what you were just saying a minute ago. But y'all were asking whether what she was moving was that we put on the agenda for next, the next meeting, a discussion and vote on whether we will thereafter allow people to come to the meetings. And I think the phrase open to the public, I hear what you're saying about accessible. I'm not denying that these meetings have been accessible to the public, but I think that's legally different than the phrase open to the public. So I think her motion, the phrase open to the public implies people in the meeting. So I, I just wanna make sure that that's how, that's the motion that I seconded and that's how I understand it. But if Ms. Williams, as a lawyer, has an opinion on that, I'm happy to defer to it.
Attorney Williams?
I think it's appropriate to have that discussion at the next meeting as I stated previously. When we bring in all of the information, have all the information available for discussion and discuss it at that time.
Well, so I just, I seconded a motion and I understood it to me, open to the public means people come in. I, I mean, if we need to amend it so that it's even more clear than that, but open to the public means that people are here as opposed to accessible to the public. And I thought that that was the concern a minute ago about the wording of the initial motion. But I think that's what open to the public means.
Commissioner Clyburn?
So since that is a, a repetitive phrase, open to the public, you're meaning, to you, it means people being in the building. So I took it upon myself to Google, open to the public. It was a little tough, but, um, it does use the word public, o- open for business, open, communal, accessible, accessible by the public, accessible to the general public, accessible to the public, available to the public. Publicly accessible, publicly available, accessible to all. I mean, it just goes down. It, it does not say bodies in the building. I'm just using this as a, as a reference. I'm looking down the list. It does not say that. So open to the public. I understand what you're saying, but I do not see physical bodies in the building. Thank you.
Okay.
That's not my legal interpretation because I'm not a lawyer.
Thank you, Commissioner Clyburn. Commissioner Devine?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, at this time, I move, uh, that we amend the motion by stating that we allow staff to, uh, continue to monitor the situation and report back to us at the next board meeting. Uh, next steps as to move forward with, uh, opening the meetings in person.
Sure. Okay, there is a motion, there's a substitute motion on the floor, um, to allow staff to report back to us next steps in reopening to the public for in-person meetings. It's been properly seconded by Commissioner Devine, I'm sorry, Bishop. We'll open the floor at this time for any questions or discussions on the second substitute motion. Commissioner Myers?
With that being said, we won't be talking about opening for the board meeting, not, nothing else in general that didn't originally?
We will be talking specifically about the board meetings, correct, Ms. Lomack? That is correct.
The regular.
The regular, yeah, the regular scheduled board meetings. Okay? Any other debaters' question? Okay, seeing now we will call for the vote, uh, on, on this particular item. Um, a yes vote would be approving for the board. Dr. Witherspoon's staff would be instructed to come back to us with information um, as it relates to next steps in reopening for in-person at the meetings. It's been properly seconded. We are now called for the vote.
Ms., Ms. Harris? Can I make a distinction also that that might also mean? It's not just information. It, there's gotta be also information slash, slash action. Obviously, I want these meetings to be accessible, open to the public according to the legal definition of in, of in-person because that's what the legal definition is. But at least that's my understanding. And, but, um, you know, I want it by next meeting. I don't think there's anything that prevents us from doing it with, of course, the appropriate protocols that we've talked. So, you know, I guess what we're talking about is that the next meeting is gonna be closed or, uh, open according to your definition, but close to mine. But defer another meeting, but if, if that's what the majority votes for, I'm asking for information slash action, please.
Okay. All right. That's a good request. Commissioner Bishop?
Yeah, wi- within this presentation, it will be legal.
Right.
Definitions.
Legal definition, all of that be brought back to the board.
Just making sure.
So when it says information, it's all of that. All right? Um, we're gonna take this vote manual because we are not set up to do it electronically. All those in favor of the motion that was made by Commissioner Devine, say aye. Uh, those that oppose, say nay. How many nays do we have? Ms. King? This is the substitute motion we're voting on. Nay?
Yes, nay.
Nay, okay. The ayes have it. The vote is five two. And I know even you're listening in. Uh, uh, we will do a roll call so everyone will know how everyone was voted, everyone voted on the substitute motion to provide, uh, information in the next steps, which also include legal. Uh, and the next steps of reopening for in-person attendance at the board meetings. Lomack? Your vote? I'm doing this for Eva because she's recording.
On the, on Mr. Devine's.
On, on Devine's motion?
Yeah, I voted nay, I'm sorry.
Nay, okay. Myers? Yes?
Yes.
Yes for Devine, yes for Harris? Yes for Clyburn, nay for King?
I said yes.
And a yes for Bishop. The ayes have it. So Dr. Witherspoon, your staff is asked to, um, bring that information before us at the next meeting. I believe the original motion fails. If I'm not, if I'm, I'm wrong, I think I'm correct. Um, the original motion fails because it was unanimously voted and amended to change the original motion. Um, to vote on having the information provided versus us voting to come back in person. Am I stating that correctly? Madam Chair, correct me if I'm wrong. Majority, okay? Do we need to go back to the original motion? You're dying. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on. We are actually still in board report. Okay? Are there any other reports from board members at this time? Commissioner Clyburn?
Uh, so thank you so much, uh, Chairwoman Harris. Um, uh, we recently, uh, lost another teacher, uh, a longtime teacher, um, Juanita Wilson, um, forty years, over forty years, uh, with, with District One. Um, I believe she was at three-